Well, if we start now, like they said, do we want, should we just wait to do bills until he gets on?
Downing, is the comptroller could put forth the bills?
Yeah.
I'm back, hi guys.
Oh, there he is.
There he is.
Alright.
What happened? It just locked up.
Good to go.
You all set?
Yep.
You're a little bit quiet, Todd. If you can bring the mic closer to your face or something, that might help.
Okay.
Alright, Mike, if you're ready to go, then we'll hand it over to the mayor.
Okay. Um, I'd like to call this meeting to order, River Falls Chamber, or, sorry, River Falls City Council, meeting of March 24th. Well, first thing we'll do is a roll call. Scott?
Uh, Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
I'm here.
Watson.
Here.
All members present.
Okay, next we'll go on to approval of minutes for March 10th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we?
We need a roll call.
Aye.
We'll do a roll call on everything we vote on, okay? So, um, Scott, do you want to call the names off, or do you want me to do it?
No, I can call them. I've got the, I've got the random sheet that moves the names around.
Perfect.
Item is approval of the minutes, motion by, um, Watson, second by Downing. Uh, alderperson, Page.
Aye.
Uh, Odine.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Approved. Next move on to approval of the bills with, uh, Mr. Beerstead.
Mayor and council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $664,832.44.
Second. Moved by, uh, motion is to approve the bills in the amount of $664,832.44. Moved by Beerstead and seconded by Morissette, alderperson Odine.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Beerstead.
Aye.
Page. Alderperson Page, you'll have to unmute, I'm sorry.
Aye. Did you hear that?
I did. Motion to carry, thank you.
Next move on to, next move on to public comments. If there's anybody out there in the audience who'd like to stand up and say anything, now would be the time. Mike, anybody there?
I am here.
Mr. Mayor, I have a public comment tonight.
Hang on, hang on one second, Sean. Is there, Mike, is there anybody there?
There is nobody in the council chambers.
Okay, yep, go ahead, Sean.
Thank you. Um, I just want to talk briefly about, uh, the cen, the 2020 census coming up real quick. Um, the census affects federal funding for roads, schools, and more, as it is meant to account for people needing resources. So I want to encourage everyone to take part in the 2020 census. Thanks, Mayor.
You bet. Thanks, Sean. Um, okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Uh, first we have acknowledgement of the following minutes. We got the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 115 and 219. We have the River Falls Housing Authority from 212. The Planning Commission from 24. The Historic Preservation Commission from 219. Utility Advisory Board from 217. The West Central Wisconsin Biosolage Facility, uh, from 123. Powerful Choices from 213. The Bid Board from 1112. The Library Board from, uh, 32. And the next is a resolution approving the EMS Agreement, Lease and Bill of Sale with Alina Health Emergency Medical Services. Uh, next one is a resolution approving EMS Service Agreement with the area municipalities. Uh, next one is a resolution authorizing purchase of professional services and equipment from Advanced Light and Sound, which will go into the River Falls Council Chambers project. Uh, next one is a resolution awarding 2020 Manhole Rehabilitation Bid to HydroClean LLC. And the last one is a resolution approving revolving loan for Bikes and Brews. Uh, this would be a loan for the Garage, Bikes and Brews for $50,000 at 4% interest, uh, for 10 years. Does anybody want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Alderman Gagne would like to poll number seven.
Okay. Anybody else want to poll anything? Okay, so I'll take a motion on the rest of it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Make the motion.
Fight it for it.
Go ahead, go ahead, Diane.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items 2A through I, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
And I'll second.
Okay.
What about item eight? Ms. Odine?
There, there is no item eight, just seven. Gagne pulled it.
Uh, alderperson Watson, number eight is an ordinance and resolution, so that'd be, that's not included in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
So, go ahead, Scott.
Uh, we have a motion, uh, by Odine and seconded by Morissette to approve the consent agenda items 2A through I, number three, number four, number five, and number six. Uh, alderperson Gagne.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Beerstead.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and Mr. Gagne, you polled number seven.
Uh, if Mr. Simpson could give him some clarity, um, this bike, uh, garage, bikes and brews, sounds like a great concept. I'm just looking for some clarity as far as the commercial revolving loan. Can you give some clarity to where the funding is coming from?
I can. I also mentioned to the mayor and the council that, um, the petition, the, uh, um, applicants, Stephanie and Matt Johnson are interested in speaking if the item was going to be pulled off of the consent agenda, so I would have them join by phone. Um, should there, should there be a concern about passing the, uh, the item? Um, the Commercial Revolving Loan Fund is a tool of the city that's been, um, assembled through, um, some funds coming back from other grants, other things that we've, um, accumulated over time. And we've used it, uh, we have a small revolving, I'm sorry, a small revolving loan fund committee made up of some commercial, um, bankers and, uh, the finance director. We have a few of these loans outstanding. There's three listed in the memo to River Valley Suites, Falls Family Eye Care and Vision, Jerry's Automotive, and David Wilkins, Inc. Um, as of February 2020, the combined balances due is $90,000. Um, the fund has been approved for a total amount of $300,000. That was set by the council, uh, quite some time ago and could be amended as, as they see fit. And we have had River Center, Tomlinson Financial, uh, Financial, Turning Point, Grateful Bread, and Peter McCarthy have been approved in the past for this, um, for this and have paid, paid those back. Garage, Bikes and Brews is a new business that's, um, asking for 50,000 of funds from the city's revolving loan fund. Um, the committee did meet and, uh, recommended to the council, um, approval. Any other que, that answer your questions, Mr. Gagne?
Um, yeah, mostly. And the other reason I pulled it and asked is, I'm, I am in favor of the Garage, Bikes and Brews. I just wanted to clarify that the city, um, generally isn't in the business of giving, um, loan money outside of economic development funds that we give it. So I think you, uh, clarified, and I move for the approval of number seven, resolution approving revolving loan for Bikes and Brews.
Second.
Questions or comments from anyone? I'll start, uh...
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I do have one other question.
Yep.
Uh, Alderman Page here. It's not specific to this business entity, but to the revolving loan program in general. Is this a program that might be available in the near future to local businesses that are looking for funds in this time of crisis that, that many businesses are facing right now?
Uh, Scott, you can, I know, I know we're looking at doing that, making, maybe making it a little bit bigger and doing that, but Scott can give you a better answer on that.
Yeah, so should the council affirmatively, um, act on this? Um, that would be, that would put the loan amount at 140,000 of the 300,000 that was authorized previously, so, um, there's an immediate access to 160,000 for, for revolving loan. Um, we have asked, um, Kerry Schreiner and, um, Amy Peterson to also be, I've identified some target, um, fund amounts to look at other funding mechanisms for, for, uh, businesses in town through a loan fund like this. But this fund has immediate funds available currently, and it is available to any business that's, um, with some exceptions, and I'd have to, I'd have to spend, uh, more time figuring that out to tell you tonight, but, um, there is some, um, exceptions to that, but it is available, uh, currently to businesses in the community, and we're, we've got some, I'd say informal requests at this point, alderperson Page, for the city to have some kind of loan fund, but we haven't had any specific request for this fund or, um, specific dollar amount requests from other businesses yet as to, as of today's date.
Perfect. That's, that's very good information. I appreciate that that, you know, funding mechanism is there. I think that very likely you will see other businesses come out of the woodwork looking for funding opportunities right now. It's just good to hear that that is there. Um, are you suggesting that if there were interested businesses, that they should simply call City Hall and request information about the revolving loan fund?
Um, they could, and in fact, the revolving loan fund, I believe you can even apply on, on our website.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for the information.
Ju, just a clarification, if I could, Mayor. I believe this fund is restricted for, or was originally intended for the downtown business district, so there are some limitations geographically. Is that, is that a correct statement, Scott?
Um, you're correct about the original, um, but the council, I believe, I, I'm just going from memory, and I'm sorry, it's not in the memo. Um, I believe the council amended the boundary maybe a year and a half to two years ago. So it basically goes from kind of north to south on Main Street, including the downtown. I don't believe it's restricted to just the bid district area anymore, but I, I'd have to check on that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we might, we might need, we might need to come back and revisit that, that if, if there's somebody off of Main Street that, that, um, that wants to apply, that may become an issue, so we may have to revisit that at some point.
I think that council could take that up to review the boundary.
I agree with that.
I would, I would certainly support that, too. I, I, we can, we can deal with that down the road, but I think it would be something good for us to look at.
Okay, so back to the bikes and brews thing. Questions or comments from?
So I'm in a, I'm...
Yeah, that's it.
So I'm in an unusual spot here, Mayor, that, um, I don't know if you want me to call the petitioners or...
I, well...
I guess I don't want to try to predict your vote here, but I, I do want to caution the, the council, if you're, if you're not in favor of voting for this, we, we ought to give, uh...
Yes.
Th- them an opportunity, but if it's going to pass, the, I certainly don't think they're, they're needing to, to speak to the so...
I pulled it in the, um, context of the Commercial Revolving Loan Fund, not the Bikes and Brews, and I did motion to approve, so I have no objections.
Okay. So...
I, I just, I just have one question, Scott. So when the, when the committee got together and approved this loan for them, it wasn't a unanimous decision, and this was how many weeks ago? Three, four weeks ago?
Correct.
Before any of the coronavirus and businesses closing and not being open came around, and we all know it's going to be at least two months, more than likely, before we can really start rolling again. Are we, I'm just, I'm just wondering, are we putting them behind the eight ball? Because September 1st is their first payment.
May I speak to that?
That's my only concern.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Um, I, because I'm on the revolving loan fund.
Yep.
I frankly don't remember it not being unanimous. We usually do by, things by consensus.
Yep.
I do remember that there was a concern as to whether or not we could have any security on this loan, and we did get it. We did get it through a second mortgage.
Okay.
Um, so that was the only concern I remember being expressed at the meeting.
Okay. That was, that was my only concern. Does it, does anybody else have anything about this?
I would say if there's any hesitation on that based on the circumstances we're in, um, and the coronavirus, I almost wonder if like number nine on our, um, our agenda would kind of cover some of that, but it could potentially come back to the council for relief, could it not, Scott?
Yeah, I think, I, I believe that, uh, you are approving it as it sits, but then there would be some opportunity, potentially, under the emergency declaration to make modifications, um, as we would set policy for other loans and things that we have out, probably not individually, we would not amend it under the emergency order, but we may amend all payment, you know, we may delay everybody's payments. That would be more appropriate, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Scott, if you want to call it?
Uh, I think we have a, I didn't hear a second, or don't have a recorded second.
I think...
I'll second it.
I seconded it earlier.
Okay.
Yep.
So I have a motion on item number seven, resolution approving commercial revolving loan application for bikes and brews. Motion by Gagne and seconded by Downing. Councilmember Morissette.
Yes.
Watson.
Yeah.
Page.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Beerstead.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Uh, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, perfect. Uh, next we'll move on to ordinances, resolution. Uh, the first one is a resolution creating tax incremental district number 15. Approving this project plan and establishing its boundaries in the city River Falls, Wisconsin. And I will take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of number eight, resolution creating tax incremental district number 15.
Second.
Todd, Mr. Beerstead seconds it. We got a first and a second. Uh, questions and comments about this? Okay. Go ahead, Scott, and call it.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion by alderperson Gagne and seconded by alderperson Beerstead to, uh, approve item number eight, or I'm sorry, item number nine on our agenda.
No, eight.
Eight. Oh, I've got my items labeled wrong here. Um, one moment, please, let me get...
Yep.
Make sure I've got the right item here. Um, item number eight, um, which is a resolution creating tax increment district number 15, approving its project plan and establishing the project boundaries. Um, alderperson Watson.
Yes.
Page.
Yes, hopefully I muted me again.
Beerstead.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Uh, motion passes.
Okay, next we move on to number nine, is a resolution declaring an emergency in the city River Falls as a result of the coronavirus. And I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move approval of a resolution declaring an emergency as a result of the coronavirus.
Second.
Oh, did you get the first and second, Scott?
I've got a first by Downing and I think a second by Odine.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so questions and comments on this?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, typically, um, Scott Simpson, what is the limit where purchases have to come back before city council? Is it $50,000?
$50,000 for sure comes back to council, um, with some exceptions. There's some items in electric and others that are inventory items that we do purchase, um, that there's some exceptions to, but typically it's $50,000, and there's some, there's a couple items where it'd be even a lower threshold because of the public construction bidding, uh, I'm sorry, can, uh, public, um, bidding process, but $50,000 is generally the amount that requires council approval.
Well, I noticed on page three of this item, at the, the very last bullet, it says, "To act in the place of city council in regards to the city's purchasing policy in order to purchase goods and services that may be needed to respond to this emergency." What, can you foresee anything that would hit that $50,000 mark, um, as far as this emergency would go, before it should really have to come back to council?
Uh, I want to be careful about speculating too much, but certainly there's things, um, we may need to purchase a vehicle or a piece of equipment of some type. Um, those are often going to be more than $50,000. For example, we might decide that we need to purchase, uh, duly diesel pickup truck with a fifth wheel or something to haul a trailer of some nature. That, this doesn't give blanket authority for purchasing on behalf of the council. They would have to be related to, um, to the emergency and provide a response to the public health. But I, again, without speculating too much, I do think there are things that we would like to purchase, um, and without waiting 30 days for a council meeting to occur, and certainly we have, that doesn't mean that you couldn't decide as a council that you want to try to meet like this and make those approvals, but, uh, clearly we're, we believe we're in a public health emergency. Um, we did wait to declare the emergency. The mayor has some authority to declare the emergency, but we waited to do it with the council because we did want to make sure that the council had an understanding of, um, what they're doing. So that's a policy decision for the council, but I do foresee some need to do that. I suspect that our COVID response, um, will, will cost this in excess of $1 million to, to, to respond to, and that's even in a, a pretty good case, um, scenario.
Yeah, and I know $50,000 isn't a whole lot. I just wanted some clarification on that. Um, you know, generally speaking, I'd love to see a special council meeting, um, or a council meeting for anything over $50,000, but I'd be in favor of that, so I have no objections.
Scott, what would, what would be an example, or what, what would you foresee going into that million dollar response? Is there a, I, I'm not asking you to speculate, but are you, are you, as you think about what we might need, what would that million dollars consist of?
Um, so, there's dual impact, um, revenues and expenditures, so I, I would expect that our, um, it's possible that our utility revenues will be reduced by 25% or more, um, per month. Um, at least in the short term, depending on how things are, are shut down. Um, so there's, there's a revenue, in that million dollars, there's a significant revenue, um, amount of that. Um, we are starting to see some overtime, although I think that will be managed in the short term, but through the month of April and May, we may, um, see more of that, um, depending what we do. Certainly there's a possibility that we'll, we do, are purchasing a number of things currently to be proactive, and it's likely that we'll have to purchase more things, so that may include things like tents, um, tables, other, other equipment and things that we need to, uh, proceed. I also think there's a possibility that we'll need to lease, rent, or purchase, um, equipment, um, to help respond to certain needs. Um, and then we've spent a lot of money on technology, which I think is money that we were spent planning, in some cases we were planning to spend, but we've certainly enhanced the number of remote licenses we have for software. We've increased the number of portable, um, portable hardware devices, computers, laptops, um, for, for work, so we're, um, it's not, it wouldn't be surprising to me. And then we've also talked about, um, these small business loans or other things that we may, um, put money in, in those. Doing those at the $100,000 or $200,000 range in total probably won't make much of a dent, so you're, you know, you may have, you, you may allocate $300,000, $400,000 to, uh, to increase, um, the ability to loan some of those things out. And then we probably will have some lost rents and leases and other things, so it's, it's probably, in my mind, 50/50 revenue and expenditure. Lost revenue to me is, is, is an expense to think about and, and obviously expense to do things, so that's where I come up with that, that kind of thought.
And, and just to follow up to that, would we, would we, as a council, uh, is it, is it, is it unspoken that we would get some accounting of that after this emergency declaration was removed, or, uh, would we need to put that into the resolution?
No, it's actually spoken. I mean, in the powers under 6215, there is a requirement for when an emergency is declared. I don't know if it's in, in our, um, resolution language, but in accordance with the, with the statutes, the mayor and the emergency manager and, under this resolution, the city administrator are required to report things at their next meeting. So you'll, you'll be getting essentially an ongoing report of, of expenses as best we can. Um, we're not, we're not, we're spending time tracking now, but we do, we'll do the accounting or the auditing of those numbers after the event is subsided, so you'll get essentially preliminary numbers for the next number of months and then kind of a wrap-up.
Okay, one final question, if I could. In the, um, in the memo or in the resolution, I can't remember which, it, it talks about us going to monthly meetings, um, rather than, 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 uh, twice a month. This format seems to, to work. Are we still feeling that we need to go to once a month, or are we going to, are we going to continue with our twice a month?
Um, so on behalf of your staff, I would suggest that, um, I hope we've made this look pretty easy, and I'm glad that we did, but, um, going to one meeting a month would be a significant amount less of work for staff. And it gives us a 30-day window between each meeting to really kind of set out our, our, our operations planning in between, um, and, and then get prepared. It, when we have council meetings every two weeks, we're, we're kind of always in council meeting agenda mode, and I don't want to make that sound like that's a, that's a burden that we can't bear if we needed to, but, um, my strong recommendation is to go to monthly, um, at least for the next, um, I think we've talked about next three months. But that's, again, that's a policy decision of the council. Um, the mayor probably has the ability to do that anyways, but, uh, under the statutory, but I think, again, that's the reason that it's monthly, council member Morissette. We're also going to spend the next 30 days before this next meeting, trying to find, this, this is okay. I would, I would say that we're very fortunate to have this technology, but this isn't, this isn't perfect for us, and we want to get a lot better, so citizen participation, ability to do that online also, and then incorporating the agenda and the voting and stuff into the two, so hopefully in the next 30 to 60 days, we can find a solution. stuff into the two. So hopefully in the next 30 to 60 days, we can find a solution that will be, um, better for the public also.
Committee meetings.
And Scott?
I'm sorry, Diane, if I could just finish. Committee meetings are not meeting right now. Um, and so there's, there's not, there's not citizen oversight to those, and I, I understand that. Um, but what would happen at the next election with, with, um, with committee assignments and different assignments for things like poller or, or those types of positions? How are we going to address that?
Assuming that the election, the election goes forward, which at this point doesn't seem that the governor is willing to take advice from local governments, um, and it, so it's going to go forward, then I believe the exception to what you're passing tonight would be that the, you would have an organizational meeting of some type that would be, we'd have to schedule and do probably through this, this technology, and that would set the, set the committees and things. But to be honest, we haven't, um, we're not exactly sure how that would work.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Diane?
Yep, I was just going to ask, um, you as mayor have the authority to call a special meeting if that's necessary, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was my.
Yes. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments on this agenda item?
Uh, Mayor, this is Alderman Watson. Um, I do feel like we ought to be getting a, a report from the, um, city administrator in lieu of the meetings that are going to be, that won't be held. So, um, I'd like to see some kind of report every, every, on the meeting days when we wouldn't normally be getting a, or we wouldn't have a meeting.
A report on?
An administrator's report.
Oh, okay.
What's going on with the response, so on and so forth.
Yep.
And then, uh, and, and something that's publicly available on the website so people can understand what's actually happening.
I would agree with Alderman. I would agree with Alderman, uh, Watson. I'd like to also include into that, you know, any major purchases, um, be reported to council. And I think historically, um, Scott Simpson and administration have done a fantastic job of keeping us in the loop of what their needs are and what, uh, things have come before the city. Um, thus far, I don't foresee that changing, but I'd like to see that included in that report.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
I would support Mr. Watson's, um, comment about, about a, some sort of a, some sort of a report, administrator's report, enhanced report. Not looking for him to put a whole bunch of time into it, given, given all he's got going on, but I, I do think it would be good to have some, some communication. I don't know that we need to make a formal amendment to this resolution. I think we can just let our intentions be known, and I think staff would take that as it's intended, I'd hope.
Scott, you have no problem doing that, would you?
No, I, in fact, I would expect that we will be providing reports more often than every two weeks, but I, I can certainly commit to providing a minister's report every two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, Diane.
Um, I, I just want to say that, um, I, I personally am also in favor of giving the staff some slack. We don't know what they're going to be facing, um, and that's why we're declaring an emergency. So I, I, I trust their intentions to keep us in the loop, and I really appreciate being copied on the memos to staff and the, um, uh, you know, uh, meeting minutes of the, uh, leadership team, but I know things can change very fast. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks. Yeah, I think Scott, staff and all the senior leadership have done a great job so far. Okay, so anything else, any other discussion on this? Okay, Scott, if you want to call it?
So I have a motion on item number nine, emergency declaration. The motion is by Downing and seconded by Odean, Alderperson Biersted.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Odean.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Okay, uh, next, uh, we, next on here is administrator report. Scott, you have anything? If anybody has any other questions for Scott about anything?
I guess I can provide a brief update, um, on, we have, I have sent you the situation report number seven, which should be available soon, and I will provide correspondence to the, to the, um, organization tomorrow regarding the emergency declaration and what we're doing. Um, the mayor is planning to, um, to provide that kind of update to the, uh, um, the community, um, via video also tomorrow to help them understand what it is and isn't that we are doing. Um, the governor's order today, from our perspective, didn't modify most business operations within the city, um, but it did send a message clearly that, um, essentially that ten, ten or less person rule kind of has gone away, and basically they're telling you, you should only be with your immediate family group, um, period. Um, as the mayor has indicated, um, via Facebook today and will through our other press releases and others, local law enforcement does not plan to surveil, um, people, to stop them, um, in their cars or ask for, for, um, permission slips for people to be traveling throughout the community. I know that was something that was of a concern or because they've seen things in other, other areas, but, um, we, we are going to operate with the assumption that, uh, the community wants to do their part and will self-police and determine what's essential and non-essential travel and, and establishments in the community. Um, so far, we, we have seen the business community being, um, very responsible in that way. Um, so it's unfortunate that we have, um, we're going to limit people's ability to, uh, enjoy some of the things that they enjoy about the community, but we, we understand why we're doing it. Um, and we are making, uh, continue to make rapid plans as the city organization in order to best, um, facilitate, um, the, the advice of public health officials and also try to as best we can to, to, uh, support the, the much, what will be much needed recovery from an economic standpoint as we, as we move out of the, uh, public health, um, and into the economic. We, we think though we will be in the public health fight for, um, for weeks, not days, um, and perhaps months. So we're, we're making a series of plans to get ourselves prepared, um, to do that. Um, we are taking advantage of moving, shifting model of customer service as best as we can, um, to online. Uh, we may, that may actually mean, uh, investments in new technology and new service levels, um, although we certainly are mindful that we need to be thoughtful about, uh, city reserves and making sure that we can keep the, um, the services going, um, for the long term. So I'd be happy to take any questions that I can try to answer.
Scott, could you talk about absentee voting and how people can register and do it all online?
I can. We, we really, um, are pleased by the amount of absentee ballots that we've already received, and we'd like to encourage everyone that can to vote absentee. Um, the deadline's been extended, so get out there. I think it's April 2nd, um, that you can, you can request it. Um, it's my, I'm sorry, it's, uh, I think it's, um, myvote.wisconsin.gov or, or my dot, um, w i vote dot gov. Um, and you can request it online, and by all means, if people are needing assistance, we would like you to give us a call on the phone and we'll help you walk through this, walk through the steps or try to text, fax, scan email or other ways that are permissible by law and get you registered and get an absentee ballot to you, and then you, you need to get that back to us. Um, and we understand there's all kinds of challenges related to what the law says you have to do and, and, and the current advisories to not venture out. So we're offering Dropbox service, so that no contact Dropbox service. People can put those absentee ballots in our regular Dropbox, um, and, or they can mail them. We, they're pre, uh, pre-stamped and ready to come back to our office. So you don't even have to find postage or do anything. They're ready to go as soon as the voter does it, so.
There you go.
And do you have the deadline for absentee voting? Can you say that real quick?
So absentee ballots need to be received by 8:00 PM on the day of the election. You can only request them until, um, I believe it's the Friday before, which is the second, um, of April. I think it's 5:00 PM on Friday. This, I, I'm not sure if they've extended the, the time period for request. Um, but again, anybody that has any questions, they can go to the city, city website or call us, and we will help them get that. We'd like to keep, um, we'd like to have as many people vote as they can, and, but we certainly would like them to do it absentee if at all possible.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Go ahead.
I will say that, uh, thank, uh, Mike Reardon for all his hard work down at City Hall. It looks like he's, uh, got quite the setup down here. So, thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else got anything for Scott? Okay, so, uh, we'll go on to the comptroller's report with Diane.
Yes, this is the comptroller's report for February 2020. General fund revenues through the end of February were three million seventy thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, or 28% of revenues. Revenues in February included property tax settlement, annual payment for state facilities and a $10,000 donation to the fire department. Expenditures for the same period were one million four hundred and eighty-one thousand, seventy-seven dollars, or 13% of expenses for a net of revenues over expenditures of one million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, thanks, Diane. Okay, next, uh, we're, we're recessing to closed session per Wisconsin state. Statues for the following purposes, uh, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, to wit, uh, the city administrators.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recess into closed session.
Second.
Hey, Scott, can we get a roll call?
Um, we have a motion to go into closed session move by Watson and seconded by Morissette. Uh, roll call is Biersted.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Odean.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yeah.
Watson.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Motion carried, um, we're in closed session.
Okay.
It's a little housekeeping, um.